All right, good evening, everyone. It is past the six thirty hour. Now it is here and I thank you for your patience. I'm going from being a patient to taking care of my mom who's ill at this particular time. So, thank you for your patience. At this time, I'd like to open up the meeting and call it to order. Uh, that's the clerk to please call the roll.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Walden?
Here.
Ms. Shinholster?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Map?
Here.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum present. If you will, please stand with me for the prayer and pledge. Gracious and eternal Father God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for how we are walking through this thing called life. We thank you, Lord God, how you allow us to be servants, first and foremost, in every aspect of our lives. We thank you that on this diocese that we are servants and we are here to serve and serve well. I ask you, Lord God, that as we come together as a collective body, that we always keep in mind the work for the people. For that's what it's all about as a joint cohesive council, is that we do the work for the people. Father God, I thank you right now for this community as a whole, that we're coming together and embracing the spirit of diversity. We're embracing the spirit of growth and we're embracing the spirit of unity. I thank you for everyone represented here tonight. We thank you for those that are safe tonight from the hurricane on last week. And I pray Godspeed for Hurricane Milton. Devastation has hit this land, but Lord, we know you're able to make us become one and make sure we rebuild and rebuild better than what we had. So this is your servant's prayer on tonight, in your son Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now move into our public comments. And we do have one person signed up tonight for public comments. And that is Ms. Sherry Butler, two forty-one North Pickens Street. And her subject is grant and housing repairs. So Ms. Butler, if you will, take the podium if you're able to. Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Sherry Butler. I'm born and raised in Millisville. I've been living here all of my life. I was told to, I've attended a couple of meetings and I was told to try to attend this meeting also. In the city, what I would like to know, who do I need to be contacting to try to get help? In my home, I have a fuse box or what you call breaker box. The house is over fifty years old. I took over the house after my mom and dad passed. I'm sixty-eight years old and disabled. And what it is, I have, um, the electrical people have been out. So have air conditioning people have been out. And they have warned me over and over that their box has got to be updated. So I could be looking out of fire. Also, I have facial boards around the outside of my house that's falling. I don't have an income to try to get this done. And what I would like to know from you all this evening, are there any grants for the city? Uh, any programs? I'm just reaching out for help this evening. And the other per, or the thing that I would like to know, in the western area, who do I need to be contacting for help? I just want you all to know, I thank God for Ms. Emily Davies. I really thank the Lord for Commissioner Butts. They are not in my area, but I can call them. People have been calling them for help, assistance. They will answer their phone, answer questions, try to direct you in different areas. But I just need some help. And I just want to know from you all this evening, what do I do? What can I do? Who can I go to? That's my question.
Thank you, Ms. Butler. I want to say I believe you're in District One. Is that your, Ms. uh? Dr. Lee is your representative for District One?
Okay, I would like, also, I'm a little nervous and a little upset. I've been going online and I see numbers for Dr. Lee. I've been trying to call for months, never an answer. Today, someone gave me a number to reach Dr. Lee. I would like to apologize to you for dialing that number. I wanted to know or get clarity on this meeting. And I hate to just say it, but Dr. Lee asked me, how did I get that number? And she told me she was gonna have to block me. But she told me less than an hour ago.
Ms. Butler?
I just need help.
Thank you. Uh, we have a time limit for our public comments. What I would suggest is that, Dr. Lee, will you?
I will.
Contact her after this meeting and?
I know Ms. Butler.
Okay. And she'll get with you, Ms. Butler, and give you all the information that you need. Thank you for coming and sharing in with us. All right, you all have received a copy of, let me go back. Let me state this before I start this. And I've said this time and time again at our meetings. All of our numbers are public that you need to call us. You'll get it in the junior recorder. Everybody's number is there. And I want to apologize if you felt that you didn't receive the attention from us that you needed, Ms. Butler. So let me say that and make that clear. Any person's email and phone number is in the junior recorder that you need to contact them at on that particular number, okay? All right, you all have received a copy of the September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four regular council meeting minutes. Are there any corrections that need to be made? Hearing none, the chair will entertain a motion to adopt the minutes.
Motion to adopt.
Second. We have a motion and a second. I'll ask the Madam Clerk to please call the roll.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
All right, the motion carries and the minutes are adopted. As far as my comments tonight, I want to say we're, and Mr. Griffin and I are already in conversation about some issues that we have right now, dealing with the county and some particular joint projects that we do. And we will be getting with you all on those, on those particular projects. Also, Ms. Griffin, I want to look at maybe us having a retreat, another retreat by December, if possible, to do another work retreat like we did one Saturday here. Just, you know, put it together however you see fit. We can get that done, at least by December.
We typically have them in January and June.
Yeah, but that would be great, but because of some of the things that are going on right now, I would like for us to go ahead and try to meet. We, as a collective body, we need to start meeting. We have too much on the agendas and too much is coming up that we need to be on top of and making sure we're staying up to par with everything. Ms. Shinholster and Ms. Map will be attending the Regional Commission Annual Meeting on Thursday night. I think you had to register for it, am I right, Ms. Shinholster and Ms. Map? Yeah, Mr. Griffin will be attending. I was gonna be attending, but due to unforeseen occurrences, I cannot attend with them on that night.
Mayor, if I may say, that is open to any, anybody here. If you're able to go, I think I spoke about it last time in there, that it starts at four o'clock that afternoon and about the open house and that, and yeah, but it is open to anybody here.
Okay. And also, I want to say that, I'm sure Mr. Reynolds, if you're aware, on Thursday evening, is it, Chambers is having a fellowship at the, the Retreat Center over here by the River Center? What's the name of that?
Oh, the Business After Hours with the Chamber of Commerce, yes, ma'am.
So they're also having that on, on Thursday night. You were supposed to have registered, given them account if you plan to attend that. But is it, what is that, Little Acres? Is that what they call it?
Uh, Adams Acres.
Adams Acres, okay. Adams Acres, right here across the river. So those are the two events that are taking place. Counsel, you can judge yourselves accordingly with them. We also had our annual Millisville, um, what's the name of the, Convention Bureau this morning at eight-thirty breakfast. And I think they updated, Mr. Griffin, am I right, on what's going on with the Convention Bureau this morning?
Yes, and, and as is always the case, Ms. Snyder will be here, our first meeting in December, to give counsel and update, as she typically does.
All right, thank you. All right, so who do we have from Georgia College and State University tonight? Now, let's be counted for so we can get those points. Wow. Good class tonight. So are you all from the same class or different classes?
We've got at least two different classes here tonight. One from Dr. Smith's class.
Okay.
Who, Dr. Christina Smith. These are budding journalists, so they are here writing about the city council meeting tonight. And then we, as is typically the case with our meetings, we have them from Cliff Wilson's class as well. So, uh, any other classes represented? We're glad y'all are here.
Absolutely.
Feel free to come up and ask us questions, especially you journalism students, if you want to.
Absolutely. And you don't just have to get a picture with the mayor. You can get a picture with anybody sitting up there. Thank you all for coming. Journalists, don't write down that the mayor was running late tonight. If you're gonna do that, please make sure that you put in there that her mother is ill. She had to take care of him. But thank you all. Please continue to come. You all make, you're the best part of our meetings and we enjoy having you all here. Thank you. All right, I'm going to shift locations for the next few presentations and move around to the podium in the front of the council chambers. We have two proclamations tonight. And the first is to declare Meals on Wheels Baldwin County Support Day. Do we have anybody here from there? No? Okay. Uh, and then the second one is on behalf of the city. And so therefore, since we, we really don't have anybody to present them, I'm gonna ask the Madam Clerk, do you have them over there? Would you read both of them into the minutes for me, please? Thank you, and then I won't have to get up and go out front. Thank you.
The first one is for Meals on Wheels Baldwin County. And it reads, whereas Meals on Wheels Baldwin County has served the senior citizens of our community for nearly fifty years, providing essential services, including the delivery of nutritious meals and daily personal contact to homebound seniors. And whereas the mission of Meals on Wheels Baldwin County is to improve the quality of life for our elderly citizens, enabling them to maintain their health, dignity, and independence in their own homes while reducing the risks of hunger, isolation, and neglect. And whereas the dedicated staff and volunteers of Meals on Wheels Baldwin County have tirelessly committed themselves to ensuring that our senior community receives compassionate care and consistent support, delivering more than just meals, but a lifeline to those most in need. And whereas despite its longstanding partnership with the United Way of Central Georgia, Meals on Wheels Baldwin County is now facing significant financial challenges due to funding reductions, which threaten the ability to continue providing these critical services to our senior citizens. And whereas the well-being of our seniors is a community responsibility and it is imperative that we, as a community, come together to support this vital program that serves so many vulnerable members of Baldwin County. And whereas Meals on Wheels Baldwin County relies on the generous donations and support from individuals, businesses, and organizations to ensure that no senior in our community goes without the nourishment and companionship they deserve. Now therefore, I, Mayor Parm Copeland, Mayor of the city of Millisville, do hereby proclaim October eighth, two thousand twenty-four, in Millisville, Georgia, as Meals on Wheels Baldwin County Support Day in the city of Millisville, and encourage all citizens, businesses, and community organizations to recognize the invaluable contributions of Meals on Wheels Baldwin County and to extend their support to this indispensable program, ensuring that our seniors continue to receive the care and attention they deserve. The next proclamation is for Georgia Reads Day. Whereas low literacy is a national crisis that affects us all. And whereas one in ten adults in Georgia are low literate. And whereas low literacy costs Georgia approximately one point two billion dollars annually in lost tax revenues, social services, and incarceration. And whereas only thirty-eight percent of Georgia's third graders can read proficiently. And whereas every Georgian has a role in literacy improvements. And whereas our communities anchored by local government leaders, businesses, faith-based, and nonprofit organizations are necessary in creating strategies to address low literacy from birth through adult years. And whereas the Georgia Council on Literacy launched Georgia Reads in June of two thousand twenty-four in partnership with GMA, Georgia City Solutions, Malcolm Mitchell, and Share the Magic Foundation. And whereas elementary, middle, and high schools are encouraged to join Read Bowl starting January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Now therefore, I, Mayor Parm Copeland, Mayor of the city of Millisville, do hereby proclaim September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, in Millisville, Georgia, as Georgia Reads Day in the city of Millisville, and encourage all citizens, businesses, and community organizations to recognize the need to increase literacy in our community by participating in activities and initiatives promoting reading.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, for reading those into the record for me. This evening, we have on the agenda to vote on a resolution R dash twenty-four-ten dash forty-four, which, if passed, will confirm Deep Roots as a community festival and establish the festival zones. Deep Roots is planned for Saturday, October the nineteenth, and there are some changes planned in terms of how it will operate. We have with us tonight, Deep Roots Festival Director Frank Pendergrass and Millisville Main Street Director Carly Schulte to give us a presentation on the planned activities for the two thousand twenty-four Deep Roots Festival. Mr. Pendergrass and Ms. Schulte, if you will, please take the podium and give us the information at this time. I've given Mr. Pendergrass a new name, Mr. Millisville. Please take the podium.
Frank Pendergast, one thirty-six North Woods Drive, Millisville, Georgia. Carly Schulte, you all know her. Thank you, Mayor, Council, for engaging in this upcoming week. I can't believe it's the twenty-first year of the Deep Roots Festival. Leaves are changing, weather's getting cold, starting to be that time of the year. Over the years, we made a few changes. Last year, we started with another major change. Part of it was in our, we had some, from our food trucks. We were trying to be more regional and local with our food trucks. Before, we didn't have any local food trucks that could come out and serve us. We were having to pull trucks out of Atlanta. But now we do have several local businesses that are getting into that. And I'd like to say that, again, we're gonna follow through this year. We got seven regional trucks. Four or five of them are actually from Millisville. So we're very pleased that we have that and we can continue to spend our money locally, which we hope we all do. And in, staying with that regional idea and in trying to make this event even more inclusive, we are, we are switching to using regional and local acts for our main stage. By doing so, we are cutting some of our costs. So now we're making that, that portion of the event is free to all. So there will, there is no charge whatsoever to come into the Deep Roots Festival at all. The only fees would be if you want to buy some food, if you want to buy some things from the arts and crafts, and of course, the Kid Zone still has ticketing. But everything else is free and open to the public. So, and we started that last year and we had enormous turnout. So we had over thirty-five thousand people came to Millisville that were in our, and we, we got the metadata to get that information. So, and we pulled cellphone data and it was, it was really close to forty thousand. Unique cell phones were in the district, within just the boundaries of the event for at least fifteen minutes. So, that's a lot of people, y'all. That's a lot of people. And in also trying to make this a better event and more, and easier for people to, to get around, we chose, typically, we choose a game, the, the event on a day that Georgia is idle. They're not playing at all. It's the same day that GMC tries to get for their, for their, their homecoming. And so this year, we chose not to do that. So it's not during GMC Alumni Weekend. It's also not during GMC or Georgia College Parents, Parents Week. So what that does, it frees up more hotel rooms for more guests to come. And we're kind of spreading out the, the money and the love in our community. So that's a, I think that's a great thing. It's a big step forward for us and we're excited about that. A few changes in the layout. We're moving the food trucks back to our old position in front of the post office. We're gonna be running, we've got over seventy-two vendors in our arts and crafts this year. So they're gonna be running both the one hundred block north and south of Wayne Street. We have over twenty-two vendor spaces for, we call it our commercial corridor. Those are non arts and crafts people. So we've, we've sold out. We've only got twenty-two spaces. We've sold them out. Same with the arts and crafts. We don't have any more, you know, we could grow the event and we might do that at another date. But right now, we got a nice, compact, four-block area that we're, the event's gonna take place. We're very excited about that. Other than that, you know, other than we've been planning, we got good weather plans. I already paid for that, so we're gonna be good to go. So we shouldn't have any issues with air. We're, we're actually, as Carly would say, we're ahead of schedule. We got, we're really, we had a wrap-up meeting today with our committee. Everything is in place, from public safety to public works, to all of our vendors. Everything is looking good so far. Of course, we're, we're, we're planning for problems and they, they will occur, but we are, we will get through them altogether. Again, we appreciate the city's, uh, city's help with this. This, we couldn't do this event without the assistance of the city and public works. And I'm here to answer any questions, if y'all have any.
Well, you know I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a statement first. Thank you for letting it be free.
Yes, ma'am.
Because now more children can come, more participate, participation, because it's about the children too.
Yes, ma'am.
We forget about the little ones, but it's about the children too. And what time this event starts?
Ten o'clock.
All right, so what time does, I call it the adult time, approximately.
Well, it depends. What, what do you call adults? I mean, so, so typically, we see our biggest crowd starts around one o'clock. You know, like if you're just looking visually downtown. But the, all, are, all of the vendors are supposed to be up and ready to go at ten o'clock. The, the music main stage starts around noon. That is one, we are, we are making, we did make one other change. Instead of splitting the stages and having a community stage and the main stage, we thought it was both financially smart and also better for our local people to have them a bigger stage. So all of the events, all of the music, all of the, 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 the community events are gonna be held on the main stage. So they get to get up on the big stage with the light and all that kind of stuff. So it'll be a lot more fun, I think. And we can get more people up on the stage as well. So the event, you know, again, the gates, I say gates because we used to be gates, but all the vendors are supposed to be in place, ready to go at ten AM. And then the last musician should be ending around eleven fifteen PM.
And Kid Zone and the Artist Market and Commercial Corridor shuts, and the car shops shut down about six o'clock. So there's no night ban, no night?
No, the band, the bands will still go on. We, we always, around six o'clock, we shut down the arts and crafts and the Kid Zone. They all exit. The, the streets remain closed. They're still gonna be barricaded with the water barricades. And they will remain that way until Sunday. So the streets still stay closed. People can walk around, you know, from, from place to place. But the music will still be going on until eleven, eleven fifteen.
Question?
Yes, ma'am.
The seating for the food, since you're gonna have all the trucks down this way?
Yes, ma'am.
Will you still have the seats?
Yes, ma'am. We're gonna have the tables and chairs like we did in the alley in between the Annex and City Hall. So that'll be, we'll have tables and chairs. We'll be monitoring those, wiping, we have a team that's in there making sure they stay clean and stuff like that. That was a great place to have it. We, we started doing that year after, before. It's a little bit tucked out of the way. It also blocks the sun. You know, a lot of times, it's, it's cool outside, but that sun can get pretty hot. So it's a little shady over there as well. And it's a nice segue between the, the food area and then the Kid Zone, which is gonna be back, of course, in the parking lot over here. Hey, we take all hits at help.
So, so Mr. Pendergast, at the, what, six, nine o'clock hour, is it a charge for the, the late part?
Come in, no fee. No fee, no gates. So, you know, there's a couple of things that, that saves us. But if we, if we ticket it, then we have to fence it, gate it, and monitor that. And that's all money. I mean, we, we spent eleven thousand dollars on fencing.
I just got to stand up on that.
That's my question.
So, so we kind of just ran the numbers. And part of it was, hey, we're spending a lot of money to make this secure, secure so we can gate it. Not, we're not, you know, also, you gotta have the tables and chairs and the tents and the volunteers to work the gates, the POS systems to run all that, the wristbands. I mean, all those things add up. And, you know, it, the Deep Roots has grown into its own entity. And, you know, we're able, through sponsors, we had a lot more sponsors this year. We wouldn't be able to do that without sponsors. A lot of them are local and we're very excited to have them as well. But that is how we're able to continue, A, raising funds for the Main Street program, because that was originally what this whole thing was for. It was to raise money to help training and staff and doing things like the facade matches downtown and other things, and training for the DDA, the Main Street Board. So we're very excited about being able to do that. And hopefully, we'll be able to continue to do this another twenty years. Maybe not with me in charge.
So the only other question I have is what time is my time to get up to saying it's staging?
Hey!
That's the only other question, ma'am. Mrs. Denise will be my backup. I'm just teasing, it's a laugh, it's good to have. Sometimes you gotta laugh.
Yes, ma'am.
You gotta laugh in the midst of what you're talking about. But thank you. And we're looking forward to it on October the nineteenth.
Yes, ma'am.
I think you'll see all of us at some point or another, another.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Looking forward to seeing all of our college students moving through town on that day. Looking forward to that. So at this time, we will move to the city manager's report and I will recognize Mr. Griffin.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to mention a couple of things that are on the agenda to be voted on tonight. One is ordinance O twenty-four-ten dash eighteen. This is actually a budget amendment for the annual operating budget. And the purpose of this is to, is to get approval from you all to add a half-time code enforcement officer. You all will remember that we had a part-time code enforcement officer that was a contract employee up until about two months ago. When he left, one of the things that I realized was we probably really need to have that position as a, as a part-time employee so that that individual can drive the city vehicle and, and just be much more official than the contract employee. The contract employee did a great job, but we actually even, even, Ms. Hilsom Butts and I actually had to run some interference one day when the contract employee went out in his private vehicle and his private vehicle hit Facebook and wanted to know why that person was telling them what to do. And so, um, so, um, there is someone who is interested in the part-time position and he specifically wants to work at night and on the weekends. And that's exactly when we need a code enforcement, part-time code enforcement officer. So I would ask you all, if you would, it is, it is an ordinance which requires a first and second read. I would ask you all, if you would, please, to suspend the rules tonight and approve that on the first read tonight so that we can go ahead and get that person in and get that person working. You can see what the areas are in the code enforcement budget will be based on that amendment and what those increases are. So I would ask you, if you would, to suspend the rules tonight and approve that. I mentioned to you in my bi-weekly report that I would share some information with you on the work program status. The main thing that I will share with you is, you'll be getting a copy of, of, an updated one of those in my next report. And there's a lot of green on it. And what that means is a lot of the things that are on that three-year work program have been accomplished and I'm excited about that. And we've still got a couple of big-ticket items, what I would call on there, to deal with as we wrap up the second year of that three-year plan. And we most likely will be adding some things. And we most likely will be adding some things to it for the final year. But one of the big ones on there was looking at changing from a defined benefit plan to a defined compensation plan, or contribution plan, excuse me, for retirement. We had Randy Briskin from GMA to come present a couple of three meetings ago. He and I have put together some information that actually, a lot of it came from what you all were considering in two thousand thirteen, but you have in your packet a document that the first page says proposed retirement program. So Randy and I are working through the blanks that you see on that, and we will be bringing first to the pension committee a recommendation on that, and then once it is approved by the pension committee, bring that recommendation to you all. Randy still tells me, Mr. Chambers, that we can have this done by January one. And so provided there are no hiccups, and you all approve what is recommended effective January one, new employees after that point in time will no longer have the opportunity to enroll in the defined benefit pension plan. They will just have the option to enroll in the defined contribution plan and will be contributing some to that retirement instrument for them as opposed to the fact that they are not doing any of that now. So I anticipate we'll have those figures situated and try to get a pension committee meeting together before the end of the month. Obviously, you all know that y'all are invited to those as well, they're an open meeting. But I would love to think I might be able to bring a recommendation back to y'all a little later than the first meeting in November, maybe even the last meeting in October. You all have in your packet of information that I shared with you actually in my bi-weekly report to you last week, and I just wanted you to have it again tonight. This is the second time I've shared it with you about the need for either reappointing or doing some new appointments to some of the boards that we, that you all appoint members to. So please take a look at that. If you are interested in us contacting the individuals to see if they would be willing to be reappointed, we're more than happy to do that, you just need to let us know that. But a lot of those terms expire either in November or December of twenty-four. We want to make sure that we get ahead of those prior to the year ending. I did make one mistake with my copy and paste. It says that there's one vacancy on HPC, there is not a vacancy on HPC. So I think I mentioned that a meeting ago, maybe two meetings ago, and then I just continued to leave it on there. It appears that we have a plan in place for naming a chair for Planning and Zoning Commission, and that'll work its way through as that group hears some things that are coming before them in the next meeting. That's all I have, Mayor. I'll be happy to answer any questions that anybody has. And I was going to tell you, Mayor, I would like to be forced to go into a closed session and then the meeting to just give you all a personnel update and talk to you, give you an update on real estate.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. I think we kind of, kind of came to a consensus on the last meeting when I stated that per Dr. Jordan Nelson and Lauren Pittman, they want it to be reappointed.
And they're both good members on that.
And then a number, Carrie Jarrett, on the Ethics Board, wanted to be, she was an alternate member, but she wants to be considered for being eligible for reappointment. She was an alternate member, she wants, you know.
No, ma'am, they just saw all those terms expire at the end of the year, so no one is resigned. Unless, unless some of the other three are not interested in serving, the alternate member will be the only thing open.
Are you going to contact them?
I can't really say, can you go ahead and make contact?
Put some money off and get them in if they're willing to serve.
So everybody that expires between now and the end of the year, would y'all just like for us to contact all of them and find out if they're interested in serving?
That would be the best thing.
We'll do that and then bring that report back to you at the second meeting in October.
And that way, and I'm going to say this, Mr. Griffin, because people don't realize those boards are not easy to get representation on, it's not a paid position, and it's something they have to really want to do from their hearts for the city of Milledgeville and the community. And so we're so thankful for those that continue to serve and serve well.
I think the only ones that are not eligible for reappointment are the two in the Twin Lakes Library System. I'm actually meeting with Jennifer, the Regional Library Director, on Thursday as I make my way over to make them for the Regional Commission meeting, and I'll be checking with her to see if they have any potential folks that they would like to be appointed, and we can invent those folks based on who they are.
Okay, thank you so very much. Thank you, Council, for being so willing to make sure we get that train moving. All right, we do not have any old business for tonight, so we will now consider the new business, which is a part of the agenda. And I will ask the clerk to read ordinance O dash twenty-four-ten seventeen by caption as a first read.
This is an ordinance to conduct a public hearing of an ordinance submitting the land development code to allow for special use located at twenty-three forty-five North Columbia Street. This property is currently owned by MDM Services Incorporated and is owned CC Community Commercial. The applicant desires a special use for a convenience store and gas station.
And this, first reason, this is the one that needs to go to Planning and Zoning Board now. Yes, ma'am, because we'll assign that to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'll ask the clerk to read ordinance O dash twenty-four-ten dash eighteen by caption as a first read.
An ordinance to amend the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five annual operating budget of the city of Milledgeville.
As referenced, this is the first read, but based on the request made by the city manager's report, the chair would entertain a motion to suspend the rules to adopt the ordinance with one reading.
To make a motion, Madam Mayor, that we suspend the rules to adopt this ordinance tonight after the first reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Dr. Lee. Ms. Walden.
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Map.
Aye.
Mr. Chambers.
Aye.
Now that we have suspended the rules, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Dr. Lee. Ms. Walden.
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Map.
Aye.
Mr. Chambers.
Aye.
The budget is amended, the budget is amended and is adopted. I'll ask the clerk to read Resolution R twenty-four-ten by caption.
To reaffirm Deep Roots as a community festival sponsored by Main Street Downtown Development Authority to permit public consumption of alcohol beverages in open containers while on public streets or recreation areas, to establish a controlled zone within the festival, to reaffirm the rules designated by the community festival ordinance.
You have heard the resolution, is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Dr. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Walden.
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Map.
Aye.
Mr. Chambers.
Aye.
The motion, the resolution has been adopted. At this time, this concludes the items on, I'll move it back up. There is a need to go into closed session this evening as the city manager has just advised. So at this time, we will be going into closed session, and when we come back, we'll reconvene back into open session.
Madam Mayor, make a motion that we go into executive session for discussion of personnel matter and a real estate matter.
Okay, it's been a motion and a second, and so at this time, we will go into closed session for these personnel and real estate matter. Thank you, Mr. Reynolds and Mr..
Dr. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Walden.
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Map.
Aye.
Mr. Chambers.
Aye.
All right, at this time, we will go into closed session for this evening. All right.
Okay.
We're ready to come out of closed session. Ask for a motion to come out of closed session and reconvene into open session.
A motion to adjourn the executive session and return to regular session.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll? All right, let's go on back into closed session, I'm sorry.
Ms. Walden.
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Map.
Aye.
Mr. Chambers.
Aye.
All right, now we are back into our regular session at this time. This concludes the items on the agenda, does anyone on council have any additional comments? I did, I did want to say, I hope you all read the weekend's paper on the committed and invested and committed. Mr. Reynolds and myself have an article in there. I told Ms. Linda, I said, it's a book, you can change it as you would. So evidently, she must have liked it because she put the whole book in there. Nevertheless, I was trying to make sure the community know that we know where their heart is, we see what they need, and that we, as a collective body, we work hard together and we're a cohesive body. So I made sure I put that in there and take the opportunity to read it. Also, make sure you read today's front page with Sheriff Messi and what he's talking about, okay? So if there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Dr. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Walden.
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Map.
Aye.
Mr. Chambers.
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourned.